Testing one, two, three. Testing. 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 One, two, three.[357.20]
Commissioner Jones and I, Penninggithans, are here in the Nat U Hill Room. And we will go ahead and get our meeting started. I'll read the public statement. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." That will go to department updates. Is Ms. Kelly with us?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Just a few updates for you today. Wastewater detections of COVID are still trending down, and emergency department visits for COVID-like illnesses have decreased over the last week. Flu activity is still noted as low, and our public health clinic does still have all vaccines available for all ages. We are also offering free blood pressure screenings. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I saw that in some places the county health department is no longer providing or is not working to provide COVID vaccines, and I was really surprised about that, given that COVID can still be a very dangerous condition for people. So I'm very pleased that we are continuing to do that. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there any other department updates? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me be here today. I'm Steve Miller. I'm the Monroe County Veteran Service Officer, and I wanted to give you a quick update today about a program called the Military Family Relief Fund Operation Holiday Program that's being put on by the state Indian Department of Veterans Affairs. It is a part of the Military Family Relief Fund. What it does is it offers a $200 meal stipend and $300 per dependent child. In order to be eligible, a veteran or their family, they must be Indiana residents, must have had an honorable discharge under honorable conditions or certain other discharge types. Their household income cannot exceed two times the U.S. federal poverty guidelines, and it does go against a $2,500 max Military Family Relief Fund grant. In order to apply for this, you'd need a copy of the veteran's DD 214. We need to fill out some paperwork. We need proof of income, bank statements, direct deposit forms, proof of child's residency, that sort of thing. And the easiest way to file for this is to reach out to my office. If you have folks who are interested, my phone number is 812-349-2537, and Andrew's number is 812-349-2568. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you have for me.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you so much. This is certainly an appreciative program, I'm sure, and it's nice at the stages putting it together.
Yes, this is a fantastic program. We're really excited to hopefully get some folks connected to it.
A $2,500 limit that you spoke about, is that an annual limit or a lifetime limit?
That is a lifetime limit, but there are, there is the Indiana Veterans Commission, and if a person applies and gets a full grant of $2,500, they will consider future grants, but they have to go through the Indiana Veterans Commission in order to go above that, $2,500 in a lifetime.
And thank you also for sponsoring kind of a coffee last Friday for the veterans and service members who currently work for Monroe County. I think that was an excellent idea.
Oh, thank you very much. We had a, we had a great time. We had about eight veterans show, and we all had a really good time kind of talking and networking and getting to know one another. So yeah, thanks for letting us do that.
I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I really appreciate this kind of outreach to the community.
Absolutely, anytime.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thanks for being over here. Are there any other departments with an update today?
I have kind of an update. At last night's council meeting, they approved our general obligation bond, and the project list that they approved it for has two differences than the project list that you guys had approved originally. It added a emergency response vehicle and radios for emergency departments use. And so I would ask if you guys could go ahead and make a motion to approve that amendment to our list so it matches what the council approved last night, and vote on that so all our bond paperwork are taken care of.
Go ahead, please.
I'd like to move that we amend last the geo-bond ordinance to include the emergency management vehicle and radios.
After that? Any discussion?
Nope.
Any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the amendment to the geo-bond, to the emergency management vehicle and radios. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We have to do, no, that, we don't have to do real call because there's nobody virtually, I think.
Oh.
Is that correct? We can do voice?
You can do voice vote unless someone is participating electronically.
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes two to zero. Thank you very much.
And I guess also in that update, and I appreciate you doing that, that's, this is not typically how we would make those kind of changes, but also in that update, I would say that the council approved the two purchase order, purchase agreements, one for the North Park site, and then they also approved the ease, grant of easement to the, to the water company, water authority, so.
I really appreciate the fact that they did both of those items.
I did too. They were both actually very important and will benefit our community.
Definitely, in many, many ways. Are there any other departments with an update at this point, then? Seeing none, I'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. We ask that participants limit their comments to three minutes, and please state your name and whether or not you're a county resident. I see that we have Cindy Chavez with her hand raised online. Could she please be admitted? Morning, Ms. Chavez. You'll need to unmute yourself.
All right, am I there?
Yes.
All right. Good morning. Technology sometimes is not my friend. Thank you guys very much for letting me talk this morning. I'm coming to you about our Thanksgiving program, which happens annually at the fairgrounds. We are trying to feed the 2,500 families this year. This time last year, we were probably about 1,600, 1,700 signed up. In the end, we served, I'll give you the exact number here, in the end, we served 2,693 families, which fed 19,689 people. We're a little ahead of schedule this year. We're slightly over 2,100 families, and the count is right around 17,000 people, but they still have another week to sign up, and the article just went out in the paper yesterday. Everybody is going to start hitting panic mode any time now, and it's going to start hitting hard with the signups. Unfortunately, we do have to cut it at 2,500. Of course, if we get anything extra, we will hand it out the following week, and that's where our extra totals come from. This year, okay, last year, cost of food where nothing donated would have been $90,000 to $95,000. This year, where nothing donated, it's up to $120,000. This is not because of increased people. This is because of the increased cost of food between 2023 and 2024, which we have no control over. Unfortunately, due to hurricane, bad economy, expenses, et cetera, et cetera, donations are exceptionally down, not only for us, but pretty much every other food pantry, food bank around Monroe County and Indiana. I just, I was hoping, I know you guys are pretty much out of money, especially with the American Rescue Act, but if there's anything at all you could consider, it would be a huge, huge help in us purchasing food to help cover these differences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Anything you would like to add to that, Commissioner Jones?
This is a serious need, and I really hope that people will step up to help out, and, and I hope that maybe we can figure out some method of help.
Yeah, I know that all around the area that donations are down and the need is up. We've heard that from Hoosier Hills Food Bank and from a variety of other sources, but this is a really important program. I had been in touch with T S D earlier. Do you have that YouTube video queued up that you could play for everybody? This is from, what, Pantry 279 from last year.
Thanksgiving is a box of food that you can take home and cook on Thanksgiving Day for your families. I like to feed people. I know food is my love language, I guess you would say. I like to know you're not hungry, and it bothers me when I see people hungry. It really does.
Okay. Do you want pumpkin?
And we ask for volunteers, and they come in and they help us set all this up. And we've been packing boxes and pulling orders and getting everything ready to go. The only way to do this and not have a line down to Walmart is we have to hit it two ways. You can come in and do a drive-through, which will put you all the way around the fairgrounds, or you could park over here in the parking lot and come in and shop for your food and pick what you want. We ask them for Thanksgiving for this one day, how many people are you feeding on Thanksgiving? Because we want to encourage them to invite their family members, to invite their friends, to have that camaraderie that we always have during the holidays. If we can alleviate some of that stress so that you could have bonding time with your family and friends, which is incredibly important, then yay, we have accomplished our job.
T S D, Pantry 279 is named after the Girl Scout Troop 279, which started this program over, or the organization over a decade ago. At the time that they began, I think their goal was to feed 30 families, and for the fact that last year they were able to provide Thanksgiving meal for almost 2,700 families is pretty, pretty amazing. Yeah, somebody dropped their book over that? Okay. But, but this is important, and so even a small donation can help, and if you're able to help, please go to pantry279.org and make a donation. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Chavez, for joining us this morning.
Thank you again for having me and helping.
I'll be out there to help again, so thank you. Is there anyone else with public comment for items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes for November 6, 2024.
A second. Do you have any comments or corrections? I sent two small ones, just were Scrivener's errors to Ms. Friedman, so those were taken care of. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor approving the minutes from November 6, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable November 13, 2024, and payroll November 15, 2024.
Second, and we have Marissa here from the auditor's office.
Hi, good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for November 13, 2024 totals $4,282,092.20. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for November 15, 2024 includes $1,642,366.49 indirect costs, and the remaining $677,335.42 were for indirect cost for the grand total of $2,319,791.91.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for vote on approval of the claims docket. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you. I will note for the record that we have no reports this week, and so we will move on to new business.
Move approval of Reed &amp; Sons Construction Agreement for Karst Athletic Complex. Fund names ARPA and convention, convention visitor and tourism. Fund numbers 8950 and 1127, in the amount of $3,210,420.
A second, and we have Ms. Whitmer from the Parks Department here to talk to us about this. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a very exciting project for us. To put it in a nutshell, it is two synthetic fields. It is the addition of three lighted, light systems on fields. We also are going to take two lighted fields and upgrade them from HID to LED. We're replacing irrigation and drainage on two fields. We're updating ADA parking lot issues that we're having to go with this project, plus a lot of utilities. Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. This has been discussed rather thoroughly for a while, but I know a lot of people are really excited that it's happening, and it's going to make a big difference to the people, well, everyone who enjoys soccer.
Well, and plus, we have, and they're just not soccer, we have athletes. We have athletic fields for lacrosse and the sport of the future. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, but it's nice, solid, safe playing surface that many, that many can use in the future. We hope to have synthetic fields done by July of 2025.
I know that this is something that the Parks Board has been working on for many years. They've been anxious to do this. And finally, with the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, we're able to accomplish this. And I think this is a boost for the community. This means that when it rains, as soon as it stops, well, unless there's lightning, that people can even continue to play on these artificial turf.
Correct. I mean, our playability of these fields, of course, when the temperature drops a certain level, we would not let people on because the fields would be too hard, say, in February. But other than that, we'll be able to get people on the fields almost immediately after a rain event.
This has implications for tournaments here in town and tourism dollars and things like that.
Overnight stays, everyone eating at the restaurants, people coming from Indianapolis, people come from Evansville, they come from Fort Wayne to play here. They, they do enjoy coming to Bloomington. And Indiana University is a big draw for parents to come down to look at the campus, too, when they're here for tournaments.
But I also want to thank Andy Knus, Bloods of Rigger.
Cooper James.
Cooper James, thank you. Because he really, really did a deep dive into everything, including the type of infill for the turfs and
Correct. I mean, if people actually watch a college football game, they'll see black rubber flying in the air when the players slide. We will not be having crumb rubber. We will not have that material on our fields. It is an organic, natural wood particle, very engineered piece that, that is recyclable. It's, in my opinion, healthier. And I think the people will be very pleased with it.
I just want to add that as a mom who had a son who played football on that kind of turf, those little pellty things are everywhere.
They do. They come home with you. They get in the washing machines. They get in your car. This won't happen. So parents who are apprehensive about this, basically because of the crumb rubber, we will have no crumb rubber.
And I also want to thank Cutters for how they're partnering in some of this as well.
They've been excellent partners.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I don't want to belabor the point. I agree with both the Commissioners today. We've talked about this before. This is an exciting project. This is economic development. This is environmentally sound. This is high tech. And I'm just pleased as punch that we spent the time to do this right. Ms. Whitmer does an excellent job at the Parks Department. It should not go unnoticed. So I just want to appreciate everybody's work on this and moving forward, how this sort of makes this community that much more livable. And the economics of bringing people in town and sharing what is Monroe County to a lot more people does wonders for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Excuse me. My name is Joe Davis, and I represent the taxpayer objection petitioners. And I have to say that it hurts to hear, coming from our public officials, that this is a great incentive for bringing in tourism. And then, to be backed up by the chamber, that this isn't a great economic development initiative. Why is the public subsidizing economic development? Why are we bringing in people who are doing nothing for the average Joe in Bloomington? Why are we trying to stir the pot so that just a few hands can profit? This, though sounding like a worthy project, is apparently abhorrently clear that it's an economic development project. Why, again, is the public subsidizing, paying for this economic development? We have bigger fish to fry, better things to spend our money on. This improvement will be great, but let's not continue to promote every darn public investment for economic development. There is such a thing as social development. Social development is the new economics. Thank you.
Ms. Whitmer?
Do I have any other questions?
No, but I would like to point out that team sports do a lot for kids. And it's not just the social aspects of what goes on, but it's also that our, our country, and particularly Indiana, is facing health crisis in terms of morbid, of people who are obese and the kinds of morbidities that come with this. And so getting people outside is good for them, both physically and mentally. And so I think that there's a lot of benefit that goes beyond any kind of economic development with this.
I agree.
Okay. I don't know who this is with their hand raised. Please identify yourself and let us know whether or not you're a Monroe County resident.
Yes, this is, this is Mike McAfee of Visit Bloomington. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, Mr. Mc?
Good, good. Thanks for, thanks for letting me speak. Again, my name is Mike McAfee, and I'm the Executive Director at Visit Bloomington. And I want to thank you all so much for these, for these great infrastructure improvements to one of our best sports facilities in the county, Karst Farm Park. And I want to thank the Commissioners and all of the county and the Parks and Rec Department, and Kelly and her crew that do such a great job and work in partnership whenever we need them to with our offices. We have a sports development part of our, of our organization that recruits sporting events from all over the country to come into Monroe County, whether it's soccer, or basketball, or water polo, or whatever it can be. And we've been working with the county and Karst Farm Park for years to, to host events out at Karst Farm Park. And we're so thrilled to have these fields coming in here. It's going to make us competitive with Evansville and Fort Wayne and Indianapolis and many of the other destinations that we compete with for these, for these events. And so this is going to be a big boon for that. And I did want to say tourism, sports tourism, is a huge part of Monroe County. It's a huge part of tourism anywhere in America, but certainly part of Monroe County. Bloomington is a, is a sports town. We all know that. $400 million are spent by 3 million people that come here every year. Over a third of those are coming to enjoy a sporting event in some way, whether they're participating in it, that type of stuff. 7,000 people work in the tourism industry. So, so all of the equipment needed and the fertilizer and the, all the things needed to take care of the grounds out there at the, at the, at the park are bought locally in Monroe County. And as Kelly talked about, the economic impact from tourism, people, visitors coming and spending money in restaurants and shopping and all the things that they do, as well as local people that take advantage. I mean, those, those fields are full of local Monroe County citizens using them all the time, and it's an incredible thing. So I'll stop there with those comments. And I just want to, again, thank you so much for what you're doing. This is great. And we're going to work really hard to keep those fields turning with people.
Thank you, Mr. McAfee. I'd also like to point out that the Monroe County Council voted to approve this as well. So it's not just what the Commissioners are doing. And also, the contractors on this are Bloomington local people.
Yes, they are.
Which I really appreciate also.
Yes. Gals.
Is there any other comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Reed &amp; Sons Construction Agreement for the Karst Athletic Complex. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you very, very much, Ms. Whitmer.
Thank you. And I will be back for the Musco Light contract in a week or so.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the 2024-2025 Stop Violence Against Women Grant Program. Fund name, STOP. Fund number, 8123, in a, in a grant amount of $129,373.42.
Second, and we have Ms. Hamlin online to walk us through this. Good morning.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is a request for approval and signature on the grant agreement that we hold with the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for this STOP grant funding. This grant period will cover October 1 of 2024 through the 30th of September, 2025. These grant funds cover about 50% of the salary FICA and perf for a sex crime deputy prosecuting attorney, a domestic violence deputy prosecuting attorney. And it also pays for a part-time assistant to the special victims unit. The goal of this special victims unit is to more efficiently focus resources, training, and staff on crimes against, crimes of violence against women. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. I think we've seen this grant for a number of years, and it's a wonderful thing that we keep on getting it. This is such an important thing for our community. And thank you for returning with it each year.
Yes, thank you for making the effort to actually obtain the grant. That's not an insignificant effort on your part. Also, I think that having specialized people who have experience working with victims makes them more compassionate and hopefully is better for these victims, although what happens is never good. But I appreciate the fact that our prosecutor's office has these specialized individuals to work with them. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on approval of the 2024-2025 Stop Violence Against Women Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please. Thank you.
Move approval of the WGS LLC Agreement for Construction Management of the New Justice Facility. Fund name, multiple. Fund number, multiple. In the amount of $200,000 for pre-construction activities, 2% of the construction costs, and $100,000 a month during the construction period.
I'll second. And Ms. Purdy, are you the one, or is Mr. Cockrell?
I would love to talk about this. Yes, this is, I mean, this is something that we've talked about for a long time. This is for the construction of our new justice complex. When we began this journey, I think there was a understanding, and I think the meetings that we all had indicate that, that the oversight of that construction project was beyond the scope of our current employees. So we started with the thought of, we know we're going to have to bring somebody in to help us with. We looked at three different models of, you know, how do we want to do this? There's a design build. There's a construction manager as a constructor. And then there's a construction manager as an, as an agent. And so after conversations, it was determined that we wanted to look at the construction manager as an agent. And so once that determination was made, we put out a request for proposals for someone to act as a construction manager as an agent. We went through that process with, with a recommendation to the Commissioners to go ahead and negotiate a contract with WGS, which is a conglomerate of Weddell Brothers, Garment, and a company called Smoot. And they have, they all had experience doing jails, which is one of the reasons that, that, that recommendation was made. So when we looked at this, so we were using a standard AIA contract document, which is not uncommon for us to use in any construction project, let alone a, a large construction project like this. I do, and so they're going to be primarily tasked with a couple of different things. I think pre-construction, they're going to be working with DLZ, our architect, to work on making sure our estimates are correct, looking at what they're doing to see if there's any cost savings that could happen during the actual design process. And then, once that is done and the bids are in and the work begins, then they're going to have people on site all the time, kind of making sure that the work is being done as it's supposed to. They're going to review, change orders when the contractor says, hey, this is a problem. They're going to, they're going to be the ones who are analyzing that problems and then bringing it to us for, for review. So that's kind of what, in a broad sense, what, what the work they're going to do is. When we, when we had the RFP, and I know that there were, you guys had questions with how this is being charged, what, what the compensation is this. We found it fairly typical that there was a pre-construction service charge. And then, and then there was also a, during the construction process, charge. Again, the, the cost of this was included in the review of the RFP. I will say that when we had them propose it, it was a $147 million project, and it's grown to what we anticipate to a $200 million project. So like the pre-construction service phase, that price has grown proportionally with the, with the budget. So when they quoted it, it was 150, and now it's 200,000. So there were some changes made in that, but they were all pretty much in accordance with, hey, this is because the budget grew, and that's how the bidders tended to do that. So that's this agreement. I will note that there is one typo in 11.1.2 where it says, when only on building is under construction, it should be only one building is under construction. It reduces our monthly cost for their, their inspection services if we're only doing one building, as opposed to the time we're constructing both. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
Do we need to do an amendment for that one Scrivener's error?
It's a Scrivener's error. I just want to note it for the record so that when you sign it and it's corrected, that you guys were aware of that.
I saw that, yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, well, this is a pretty exciting moment. And I think we've been, we've spent a long time getting to this point. And it's definitely a very good thing that we're moving forward. I'm very pleased that we're using local firms for it. And our meetings with the construction manager have been very positive. And I feel really good about this decision.
I do as well. And I want to thank both Ms. Purdy and Mr. Cockrell for all their efforts that went into this, too. It was not just a five-month process, that's for sure. And I want to point out that it will be at least sometime next year before we break down, break ground on this. And so this $1,000 a month during construction period won't start until then, so.
And I think if we're, if we're, if we're working on, if we've got bids out and working next year, we will have performed a miracle. I would anticipate it. It will be much more likely in '26.
We're at least. We are rooting for the miracle. Yes. But with something this big, I think it's better sometimes to take a little bit of extra time. Yes. Is there any public comment on this item?
Joe Davis with the taxpayer objection petitioners. We believe it is improper to go ahead and award this contract and allocate, start allocating funds toward it until we have looked at the most logical location, the most economical location, the most ethical location for the new justice complex, which is downtown, basically at 302 South Walnut. which is downtown, basically at 302 South Walnut Street, South 302 South College Street, South of Third Street. The public owns this land. It's a very large piece of land, in town, central. Goes as deep as Smith Avenue, it's very deep. We can house everything downtown, simplify the construction process. It can happen much more quickly and much more economically, and at much greater savings to the taxpayer if we hold off and we investigate and see that truly the best location is the space at 302 South Walnut in that general vicinity. So the taxpayer objection petitioners top strongly, strongly wish that you do not award this contract at this time because the parameters are going to change. There's another possibility for South Park. The planned expansion of the convention center could take place there. It could move there. Perhaps this is what that contract should be awarded for, for a building of an expanded convention center in South Park, right where this proposed location is to build the justice center. So let's just swap the properties and swap the concepts. I'm really not for the expanded convention center, neither are my constituents. However, let's swap concepts and properties and do justice right here in Monroe County. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, as you heard last night from Mr. McKim, or from Councilmember McKim, that location that you're referring to is not nearly large enough. And we've had experts look at this, and we know that we need between 20 and 25 acres. And so the parcel that you're talking about is not, just not big enough, and you've heard that before. And so I feel at this point that you know that we voted on this, you know that the council's voted on this, and this is a done deal.
No, your experts that you mentioned, you addressed me, I request an opportunity to answer to your address.
Mr. Cockrell?
He has used his three minutes. If so, by rule, he is not allowed to speak more unless you grant him more time.
I don't think there's anything new to hear here, so if there are any other comments.
Well, the thing that needs to be heard is that your advisors come from the southwest where land is cheap and everybody builds on one story.
Mr. Davis, thank you.
The current justice building is more than one story, and we can create a new justice campus that is more than one story. Thank you.
Any other comment on this item? I don't see any hands.
Yes, I will comment that we have discussed what sort of building this should be at great length with many experts, both forensic and in construction. And one of the worst things you can do is build a multi-story jail, which is exactly what we have experienced right here with our current multi-story jail. It is very, I'm fortunate if we cannot learn from past history.
Very well said, thank you. No other comments, I'll call for a vote on the WGS LLC Agreement for Construction Management of the New Justice Facility. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Thank you very much. Next item.
Move approval of an agreement with the Indiana Railroad Company regarding the Eagleson Bridge Number 922 replacement. Fund name: Cumulative Bridge. Fund number: 1135. In the amount of $126,484.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Ridge here.
Good morning. The agreement, again, is for project management, engineer reviews, and flagging services when the Eagleson Bridge is replaced, Bridge 922. The services are reimbursable through the NDOT federal aid process at 80%.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I will note that several years ago, when I was looking at things in Indiana, we have a lot of bridges that need to be upgraded and repaired. And one of the things that you've taught us, Ms. Ridge, is that when we replace a bridge, it's not necessarily the same dimensions anymore as those old bridges. And so it adds to that cost, but hopefully to the safety.
Absolutely.
Is there any public comment on this item? Again, I appreciate your efforts for getting state grants, state money for this. So with that, I'll call for a vote on the agreement with Indiana Railroad Company regarding the Eagleson Bridge Number 922 replacement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of the NDOT Change Order Number 40 for Fullerton Pike Phase 3. Fund name: Fullerton Pike Tiff. Fund number: 4922. In the amount of $36,751.42.
I'll second, and again, Ms. Ridge.
Let me clarify, it's Change Order 4, not 40. That's a typo. Thank goodness. So the purpose of the change order is to match the ornamental lighting with the poles that were put in on Phase 1 and 2 so that we can stay consistent throughout the whole project for the aesthetics of it. So that is the reason for this change order.
Thank you, comments or questions?
Yeah, I know the people who live in that area will appreciate this.
Yes, and I appreciate the fact that Ms. Ridge has been so responsive to the people in that area, meeting with them, listening to their input. But I also think that the citizens have added to what we're seeing down there. So any comment, public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the NDOT Change Order Number 4 for the Fullerton Pike Phase 3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Yes, I just have seen so many change orders in 40-year system. This is the cross-century project, I think.
We have a real problem if we have 40 change orders.
Okay, so let's move on. Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-52, Westgate on Third, PUD Plan Amendment Number 2.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Grisilius from the Planning Department with us, along with some explanations and maps.
Absolutely, good morning, commissioners. So as you said, this is Amendment 2. We're located in Van Buren Township off of West State Road 45, 4755 West State Road. So the property owner is Westgate on Third LLC. So this is the Westgate on Third Planned Unit Development. So as I like to do as we see these amendments, just a quick overview that this PUD was, outline plan was approved in 2020. The development plan was approved in '21 with grading being started in '23. And then this year, you saw and approved Outline Plan Amendment Number 1 in June of this year. So the plan is currently a multi-use, primarily residential PUD with 330 units. It is on 38 acres with a maximum of 40% impervious lot coverage, so 60% non-pervious PUD development plan. Right now, the plan has 330 residential units with 33,000 square feet of commercial uses at the very northern portion of the property, so closest to State Road 48. And three buildings, it's currently specified as 11,000 square feet of ground floor retail/business services and 22,000 square feet of ground floor private office. So as of today, all of the building permits, except for three permits, have been issued. So if you drive by, there's multiple buildings that are up. It's moving quite along. That amendment in June that you saw this year, that added a phasing plan. It included converting some covered parking to surface parking and converted a community garden to a sports and exercise area. So the area that we're looking at is this northern portion with the three buildings on screen, Buildings 1 through 3. A little reminder, this is the approved phasing plan with north being to the right of the screen. So there, it's been approved with an eight-phase plan for construction. So today, this amendment deals with the buildings that are located in Phases 8 and 7. So they're requesting to remove the 33,000 square feet of commercial use space, so it would not be a mixed-use PUD anymore, it would be primarily residential. Point number two is that they would remove the requirement for three elevators in Buildings 1 through 3. That was written into their outline plan originally in 2020. And then because of these changes, the third amendment is to add 41 units to the development in Phases 7 and 8. And that is a correction, when I saw you at the work session, I said 42. It is 41 units. So just an overview of the documents within your packet. Exhibit A is going to refer to the ordinance and also has the proposed PUD plan with the amended text as proposed. Exhibit B includes a proposed written commitment that has been reviewed by legal. Exhibit C refers to the Plan Commission Staff Report. And then Exhibit D is responses from some of your questions that you had at the work session last week. So we did type those up, and those responses were included, and I also have them included here in the slideshow. So the, this is a snapshot of the proposed outline plan. So again, a lot of the text was amended to change and update the ratios and the information that they have in the plan to reflect the removal of commercial space, the removal of the elevators, which were specifically said, and adding in those 41 additional residential units. So they had some statistics, and they outline, you know, how many apartments, how many free apartments. So they've updated a lot of numbers throughout their plan. So the design for the first three buildings that is approved is on screen. So you see that first floor commercial with residential above. The petitioners are proposing this style of unit, so that's the proposed style with three floors of residential. Some of their, we discussed this and was originally included in that Amendment 1 that you saw this year to remove the elevators. And through that original Amendment 1 process, that Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission, and then again with you commissioners, that, you know, there was just conversations about accessibility and utilization of commercial space in Monroe County. They had included it and then originally struck it from that First Amendment because of this issue with the design of the buildings. So with their outline plan specifically saying that these buildings would have elevators, and then also being commercial, it created these floor plans that, you know, the petitioners ultimately just found are going to be undesirable on a market because with having elevators, it requires an interior corridor, and then the leasing spaces for that commercial space gets broken up into footprints that they found would probably not be desirable. So on screen, I have one example of that commercial layout, and then here is a second footprint of a commercial layout, again, with like an interior corridor, which just makes these units really small, that they just identified as, you know, a problem with marketing. And the petitioner can expand on that if they'd like. So this is Exhibit 7 of the Staff Report. So they are proposing to switch that with the removal of the elevators and the removal of the commercial. They're proposing to change that to residential units. As something, you know, they've included to kind of invoke a favorable outcome is that they propose this idea of including workforce housing. So they have proposed that 20% of the 125 total units in Area A, so not just the new 41 units, but the total units across Buildings 1, 2, and 3, all of which are three floors, would follow workforce housing guidelines that they've laid out within their written commitment. So in general, workforce housing aids people that are rent burdened. So it is different than, say, Section 8 or publicly funded or assisted housing. So workforce housing is, you know, a certain family size versus salary. You have a lower rent that reflects your salary. They've laid that out in that written commitment. They've also identified adding that the first floor residential units would be accessible, and I'll go into that a little bit more. They have proposed that the workforce housing would be available for a total of 25 years, or a total of 10 years, with those units then stepping down gradually every five years, and then the program would conclude after 25. And we have, I have some more information on that, and of course, the petitioner, Mr. Ryan Huffman, can also go into it. So the proposed residential units without elevators, the footprint is on screen, is just one option that they are looking at. So the Plan Review Committee heard this in September of this year. They did not forward a recommendation, but had a really good discussion, of which gave us multiple points that I'm going to now go into, and they contributed to the conversation. So we talked a little bit about how the comprehensive plan, the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Mixed Use Designation does not require that the zoning have mixed use, that their language, you know, basically says it could have mixed use, and it's written in a way to offer flexibility. And that ultimately, this comprehensive plan document is a guiding document for decisions and is a finding of fact for staff and the Plan Commission. Two other topics was questions about building code and the removal of elevators and accessibility, and then also a conversation about first floor commercial rental availability within Monroe County, whether they should keep part of it or not, and kind of a general discussion about, you know, you see vacant first floor commercial. What is the, you know, the current Wilmington-Monroe County market look like? What are, you know, and kind of asking and prompting petitioner to provide some information. So to touch on one of those points, which was elevators and accessibility, planning staff did speak with the Monroe County Building Commissioner, Bobby LaRue. So elevators are not triggered in residential buildings that are three stories or less. All buildings within Westgate are a maximum of three stories. That's written into their outline plan. Per building code, there are some exceptions where, you know, elevators might be required, like a shopping center, shopping mall, or a healthcare facility. And then, you know, Mr. LaRue stated that many of the apartment buildings in Monroe County do not have elevators. So the requirement for putting in the elevator, the elevators in these three buildings only exist within their outline plan. So to move on to elevators and accessibility. So the development has a total of 17 structures. 10 buildings are residential apartment-style buildings. And that includes the three that are under consideration here. So all the buildings are under three stories. The other seven apartment buildings do not contain elevators. And then this slide just again reiterates that that requirement was really only from their outline plan. So discussing a little bit about accessibility. They discussed the idea that the first floor be reserved for ADA accessible units and that those are units that are designed to be convertible, to fully accessible. They're identified as Type B within ADA guidelines. And I'm going to kind of skip over a little bit more of this because we do have a response from the petitioner on the next slide. When I say, you know, convertible or adaptable, that is where the apartment is able to meet the majority of standards, like frame width, you know, is going to be built in. But things like base cabinets, they can be removed or adapted to be, like you say, wheelchair accessible, or say there is, the apartment has been framed in a way that would allow for grab bars. So convertible or adaptable. So at the work session, there were some questions about this topic. So I'm going to go ahead and read the petitioner's response here, which is that, I'm not going to read all of it, just some of it, which is that Westgate on Third has followed and will continue to follow state and federal building codes and guidelines by constructing all first-level all first-level units in all buildings of the project, so buildings one through 17, as ADA adaptable. And they state, there are no longer Type A units. Type A was removed prior to the 2014 Code Book. And that required a certain percentage of units across the entire project be constructed prior to first lease as ADA accessible. So what they go on to state is that when a resident with ADA needs decides to lease a first-level unit in Westgate on Third, it's the responsibility of the owner to accommodate the leasing by finishing out all necessary accessibility features inside the unit. And that is at the expense of the property owner at Westgate. So all buildings, hallways, doorways, sidewalks, parking lots have been designed and reviewed and built to ADA standards. And that the first-level units currently under construction have been prepared, inspected, and passed to the discernment of the Monroe County Building Department. So that is interesting. They have, you know, a resident that needs, you know, an accessibility, then Westgate on Third as the property owner would finish it out to meet those requirements. So that's very interesting. One of the next questions from the work session was kind of a breakdown of, so the specific question was the breakdown of total number of studio, one, two, or three bedrooms then and now, and which become ADA accessible and which are eligible for workforce housing rate. So Mr. Huffman has provided those numbers. Point A on the screen is the previous iteration, and then point B is with their, with this proposed outline amendment. They state that all first-floor units in buildings one through three, the unit mix design and layout on the first floor is the same as floors two and three, but they would be adaptable. And that workforce house, regarding workforce housing, that buildings one through three and all three floors, so total nine floors, all unit types on all three floors and all three buildings are eligible for workforce housing up to the first 25 accepted workforce housing applicants pending unit type vacancy at the time of inquiry. So to bounce back to some of those discussion points from Plan Review Committee, this exhibit is from the Planning Commission Staff Report. This is about, you know, commercial availability, the market in the city of Bloomington and the county of Monroe, you know, what does it look like? So here's some information that they provided. They did an analysis of first-floor commercial spaces. I want to note that this analysis is specifically for complexes where it was first-floor commercial with residential above. So this doesn't include all commercial buildings. It is only a residential apartment building with a required first-floor commercial. So they included 10 developments with a total of 38 individual commercial units. They found that 13 are currently vacant and that those 13 units contain of 69,000 square feet. And that if Westgate on Third is built with first-floor commercial, it would add an additional 32 units to the market. This table provides square footages of each space and concludes that Westgate on Third, if built with the commercial space, would provide an additional 46% of the commercial lease spaces with, which comes to an additional 30,000 square feet of leasing space. They also included three statements from kind of area experts that generally offer that it would be unlikely to be successful in leasing these units. And that's Exhibit Six of the staff report. Okay, another point was regarding workforce housing. When does a tenant see a rent increase? So the, I think the concern was from that question at the work session was, you know, you're renting at a workforce housing rate. This 25 years is up. When does the tenant, you know, immediately see a huge increase? What, you know, just how would they see it? So the petitioner stated that the workforce housing calculations are based on yearly average median income and accounts for fluctuations over time. So a standard apartment lease is one year. And a workforce housing tenant would provide proof of employment and wage with a pay stub or W-2 at the inception of the lease and add an annual renewal thereafter. It'd follow the matrix. And they provided the matrix here in just a couple of pages. So the tenant would be aware of the increase that they would see each year, and it would still be based on their income. To jump back a little bit, there was also a question about Section Eight housing over workforce housing. So the petitioner states that, you know, Section Eight housing is a federal HUD program that typically comes with a government subsidy, both on the construction loan with a year-long plus application process. They state that after construction, there's also ongoing government subsidies for rental rates. They state that typically the subsidy is federal, but is handled by the government. They have stated that Westgate on Third will be constructed without a government subsidy with private debt and equity, and that the workforce housing program in the written agreement would not require government subsidy for rental rates, but rather subsidize at the owner's expense. They go on to say that workforce housing and Section Eight are both programs based upon the same average medium income calculation percentages, and that the main difference being that workforce housing adds an affordability component to a new and/or luxury multifamily housing project. They have a few more sentences that say that they stand by the drafted written agreement attached and the calculation sheet that we just saw. So Plan Commission heard this on October 24 of this year. They voted seven to one for a positive recommendation. And per Indiana State Code, the request needs to be heard within 90 days. So we've already covered that. So staff is recommending approval of the Plan Unit Outline Plan Amendment. We support the inclusion of units set aside for workforce housing as outlined within the written commitment. We support the conversion of commercial or residential use for the buildings one through three. And also, the petitioner has added community gardens back into the outline plan. And we support the addition of adding that back in. Does anybody have any questions?
I think the questions I have would be for the petitioner.
Yes, well, thank you. I need Mr. Cockrell to coach me here. I always forget what, what happens next. I think we have 15 minutes for the petitioner.
Actually, the petitioner can go with no time limit. Then you have a 15-minute period for people who are speaking in favor of the petition, a 15-minute time period for those speaking in opposition to the petition. And then the petitioner then has a five-minute period, which to respond to the comments of the public.
So at this point in time, if we have the petitioner or petitioners here, please come to the microphone or raise your hand on teams and please state your name for us so that we know whom we're addressing.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Ryan Huffman. I'm Vice President of Development for Sunstone Construction, the general contractor at Westgate on Third, as well as Delmo Development, the original and of the project. I'll keep my introduction short and sweet as we've been working on this in some capacity since 2019. We know each other at this point. We heard your need for more accessibility, and it's covered most of what I'm about to say, but I just wanted to give you a factoid, I guess. With the proposal of the 41 additional first-floor units, it would make a total of 117 of 371 total as first-floor adaptable units, which is roughly one-third of the entire project having adaptability standards for anyone with ADA needs. She spoke about the workforce housing model. And that, that being wholly supported by the ownership, no public subsidy, no government subsidy necessary that would be handled directly by the project itself. And Ann said, we did have a lot going on. We have 12 of the 17 buildings of the project currently erected. Keep in mind that framing began in June. So in five months, we've, we've put up 12 buildings. We're moving quickly and we're keeping busy. And we're hoping to continue to, with an approval, we're hoping to continue to build buildings one, two, and three yet this year with, with good weather looking ahead. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That was short and sweet. Commissioner Jones, do you have questions for Mr. Huffman?
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I do agree that the commercial space probably is unnecessary. It seems to me that there's quite a bit of commercial space open around Bloomington and probably would not get used. I am a little disappointed. One of the ideas that was originally floated with this project that I thought was quite exciting was office space for short-term rental. And I thought that was an idea. I have a son who works from home, and at times it would be helpful if he had someplace else to go to work. And I just thought that was a good idea, but it may not be the best location for that idea. I'd like to thank you for putting the community gardens back in. And I believe you said you did include a spigot so they can be watered, which makes them a lot more usable and successful. And thank you for that. I am curious, how did you pick 25 years to be the limit for the workforce housing?
Excuse me, 25 years is the standard commercial amortized mortgage, like a 30-year single-family home mortgage. A 25-year amortized mortgage is standard for commercial. And that's where it's, we've chosen that because of the possibility of a sale as a property ages as well. You cannot run with the property or it'd be a hindrance to a, to a sale, future sale of the property.
I see. Another thing that I noticed that seemed a little bit curious to me is that apparently anyone who lives there must be currently employed. I'm wondering if someone's living there and happens to retire. Does that mean that they would lose their ability to stay there?
No, I may have gotten misconstrued with the workforce housing, which those 25 units of the 370, just 25, would require proof of employment. The rest of them could be anyone. Workforce housing requires proof of employment. That's a, it kind of been the name of it.
I can see, yeah. Okay. That wouldn't cover somebody who gets Social Security disability income then? They have a regular, ongoing income that you can verify.
Mr. Cockrell, are you aware of, of workforce housing standards by HUD or for the city of Bloomington? That's what this was based off of?
I do not. I apologize.
Okay, I, I guess it's just something I was rather, I, I will say that I do feel that our community is leaning towards the kind of ageism that kind of tells old people, well, don't bother to try to get out and go anywhere because you're going to have to walk anywhere you go. And older people who don't walk so easily find it hard getting around. And now it sounds like if your workforce and become older, the, I guess, the laws surrounding it say you can't retire, at least if you want to continue having a place to live. These are things that I think don't benefit our community, but they aren't things under my control.
Just, just to be clear, those are 25 units of the 370?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just making sure, sorry.
Yep. Yeah, we, I, I do appreciate the fact that all of the first-floor units will, that 117 will be the Type B so that they can be adaptable. I would like to, I really would like to have this be eligible though for, too, for people who are on some kind of government income for the workforce housing. And I'm, I'm, I really appreciate also the fact that you guys did your homework on the commercial space and what is the underutilization here in the community. That, for me, was very important to see that. So I appreciate that. With the addition of the community garden, there's a, a local pilot program on composting food waste through One Sustainable Joe. And so I hope it's okay if I have Joe reach out to you.
Absolutely.
Because one of the things that Joe has said is critical to having this kind of composting program, which actually reduces then hopefully the waste that you all are paying somebody to haul away, is that to have a community garden really makes a big difference. So to have this back in place is also a real plus. And I appreciate the fact that you and Ms. Casilius worked together to answer all the questions I had last week because I, I do care a lot about people who face challenges. Okay, at this point then, we ask for people who wish to speak in favor, other than Mr. Huffman.
There's a 15-minute time period. It's still three minutes per person, but up to 15 minutes in the speaking for, and then that same time period speaking against.
Okay, so TSD, I hope you'll have a clock ready to help us here. And anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this, please either raise your hand or come to the podium in the NetU Hill Room.
Good morning again, Commissioners. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I just want to voice our support for the Westgate PUD. I think this is a very well-thought-out project. I appreciate the collaboration between the Plan Commission, the department, the commissioners, where we've seen in the last five years, this, this sort of proposal really develop into something that I think benefits the community. I think the adaptability piece, and more importantly, the, the workforce housing are things that we sort of desperately need. We can point to the ROI study. I know as much as we might have some issues with it, it does say the need for housing. And I think if we look at the rental market, the variety of options in this particular PUD is much needed where much of the rentals in the, in the city are student housing. And this kind of goes to where we kind of, we need to go and sort of look at these well-thought-out projects with green space where we're adapting with less commercial based on the need of the community. And I just want to appreciate the work of the commissioners as well in sort of developing this proposal and something that I think really fits Monroe County and something that I think we do need. And to speak to Commissioner Jones's piece, you know, the city is looking at some 55 and older projects in housing, specifically one on Walnut Street Pike. So we're, we are moving in that sort of direction to look at both workforce housing and looking at retirees. It's, this is a multi-pronged approach from different levels of government that we need to take seriously and keep that collaboration going between all units of government. I think we can get this, this housing crisis under control. I think we're, we're moving in that direction. Appreciate your time today and your support for the Westgate PUD. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. M. G. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this project, this amendment? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Please either raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. TSD, if you could restart the clock.
Joe Davis. One very, very, very disappointing thing is that none of this housing will build equity for the occupants. They're all rentals. They're all rentals. It's going to be churn, churn, churn. This is going to place a huge load on the Monroe County Sheriff's Department as they deal with the churn type of resident. This is going to place a big burden on our existing transportation infrastructure, our roads. This developer has This developer has experience, is shown in the packet, with equitable, equity-based sale of residential property in their developments. Why is there no component here for equity building? Churn, churn, churn. And then sale of the development. And more churn, more churn, and more churn. Who knows how many times this development will flip? The whole development. Who's going to be accountable? Who is the next purchaser of this churning investment? Who is going to be accountable in the future? We need accountability.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this proposal? See none. Mr. Huffman, if you wish to respond to anything that you've heard so far? Mr. indicating no by shake of the head, I just want to report that since we're being recorded. So at this point, do we just take a vote, Mr. Cockrell, on our...
Yes, that would be perfectly acceptable.
Okay. So with that, do you have anything else you wish to add, Commissioner Jones?
I'll just say that I think that our community needs a variety of housing types, and this will contribute to that.
But we also heard when it was initially proposed from several of the employers that are out near there, that they felt that this particular kind of development would allow people to cycle to work, walk to work to certain instances. And so this, we have the support of Cook and other employers that are there for this particular project. And I'm pleased that we're able to expand the housing in Monroe County in this manner. So with that, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2024-52, Westgate on Third, PUD Plan Amendment Number Two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Huffman, and thank you for your work on this. Okay. Last item.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-39, amending Resolution 2024-21 regarding the opioid settlement application board.
I'll second, and we have Ms. Turner King here to talk to us about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this resolution comes from, well, let me give you the background. Resolution 2024-21 was passed by the Board of Commissioners on June 28 of 2024. That formed the opioid settlement application review board. That board was tasked with reviewing community and individual grant proposals that would be funded with opioid settlement funds that the county was receiving from the opioid The board reviews the applications, and then they make recommendations to the Commissioners for approval of the grants, and then the council would appropriate it. In the founding resolution, conflicts of interest were defined, along with a procedure on how the board would deal with conflicts of interest. On, I think it was November 1, the board had its first meeting. They reviewed the language. There was expressed concerns, comments. So we drafted language, a draft language was created to address their concerns. The board reviewed it on November 8, and now they're making a recommendation of the attached amended language for Commissioner consideration. And if it helps, I'm happy to pull the resolution up on my computer and share the screen. I just didn't know if you want me to go through it.
Yes, please.
And for our, for my old eyes at least, can you enlarge them, please?
I'm trying.
Thank you.
So I have the resolution displayed, and I'm going to scroll down to the part where it addresses conflict of interest. So we added Section B, conflicts of interest for board members. The previous language stated, "A member of the opioid settlement application board shall recuse him or herself from any review and/or approval of all applications discussed during a quarterly review meeting if the member has a fiduciary interest within a nonprofit entity and/or county department that has applied for the funding." So that required the member not to just recuse themselves from one application considered in the quarter, but all of the applications in the quarter. And a similar clause was in the founding ordinance for consideration of individual applications, because both community organizations and/or individuals can apply for grant funding. So the language in red would replace those two clauses. So the eight, subsection A acknowledges that the members of the opioid settlement application review board naturally will have conflicts and that they should disclose such when they arise. It indicates that the members will be provided with a list of organizations or individuals that have applied for the grant funding. Before the discussion of the applications, the members are to review them and then disclose any conflicts of interest that they believe exist. And then it defines conflicts of interest as a member who has an affiliation in the following capacities: a director, trustee, officer, or employee of an organization; an individual with a fiduciary interest as a fundraiser or financial... I paused because I thought we edited this language. That's the version that I have. I thought we changed this in the opioid settlement review board.
I don't have the written stuff with me. Sorry.
Okay, I'll go back and check. An independent contractor who is actively contracted by the organization at the time of allocation of funding, and that does not have knowledge at the time of allocation that the contractor will perform work for an organization. So in essence, you don't have an active contract, and you don't plan on allocating money to benefit by getting an active contract. A person or professional contributor directly or through an entity which he or she controls accepts for contributions funded by governmental entities, that's to account for the fact that some of the local recovery organizations received ARPA money. And the amount contributed is more than 5% of the operational budget for that organization. And then the last two address the situations regarding when an individual applicant, and so if a board member is an immediate family relative, defined as spouse, parent, and/or child by blood or marriage, or a partner, whether business or domestic, but not including a partnership formed through employment by Monroe County. That's to account for, our health department works hand-in-hand with recovery agencies. And then subsection B describes the procedure for which opioid application review board members will handle conflicts. It has them recusing themselves from both discussion and approval of the particular grant application. So before, it said all grant applications for that quarter. This limits it to the one for which they have a contract. And then it accounts for, in the hopefully off chance, that if more than three board members have to recuse themselves, which means then a quorum wouldn't be voting on the application, that that application would just be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for consideration.
I have very long things to say, so I'll let Commissioner Jones go first.
Well, this all makes sense to me. I think it's important that people recuse themselves when they do have conflicts, and it sounds like it was pretty complicated to work out.
So I went and looked at state code, and it indicates that public servants who have conflict of interest must declare theirs. And a public servant is not just an elected official, but people who are appointed to boards and commissions as well. But it also says, and this is from the Association of Indiana Counties handbook that they put out for elected officials, this is from their stuff, it says, "A public servant is not prohibited from having a pecuniary interest in or deriving a profit from a contract or purchase connected with the county if the public servant is not a member of or on the staff of the governing body empowered to contract or purchase on behalf of the governmental entity." This particular board does not have the authority to, they're not empowered to contract or purchase. They are making recommendations that will go to the county council and to the county commissioners. They are not the ones, their duties are to make recommendations, to review these things. And as Ms. Turner King knows, I'm one of the five people on the board. The Commissioners have two appointments, the county council has two appointments, and the health board has one appointment to make up those five individuals. So Ms. Turner King knows that I'm not in agreement with the language that was proposed here in section BB of this resolution. Back in 2017, we were staffing with the very first opioid summit that we did here in Monroe County. It turns out, I've heard subsequently, that we were probably the second government entity across the whole country that put on an opioid summit like that, which is pretty amazing. One of the people I got to know during that time was Chris Abert, who was the driving force behind the creation of the Indiana Recovery Alliance. And one of the things that Chris taught me and others involved in that program taught me, that when we make decisions about folks related to recovery, they're saying there's nothing about us without us. And so for me, and we've specified this in the creation of this commission, they, we worked to, with others, to create this settlement application review board, and we specified that at least one member of that board should be somebody in recovery. So yesterday, and this is quite an aside, but yesterday I participated in a program sponsored by the National Prevention Science Coalition called Determining Best Strategies for Allocating the Pharmaceutical Settlement Dollars to Abate the Opioid Crisis Part II. It was people all across the country, more than 100 participants. I think I was the only one that I saw from Indiana, but that's not unexpected at times. One of the speakers was president of the Baltimore City Council. He spoke about using people in recovery in their program. Another person is part of the group at Johns Hopkins School of Public Health who participates in their Five Guiding Principles program for the use of the opioid settlement funds. And this Five Guiding Principles is being utilized throughout the country on how to appropriate these opioid settlement funds. And Principle Five recommends input from various community members, including people in recovery. That's in their written documents. So we're not a large community, we know that. And individuals in recovery, to me, are likely to have, to have or have had an affiliation with one or more of the groups or individuals that are applying for opioid settlement grant money. And I feel that they're very, very important in the process of making these recommendations. So I'd like to recommend that we would indicate that if a board member has a conflict of interest, he or she is to indicate that in writing, which is also part of Indiana Code, so that we have that in, we have that to share with people. And they will inform the rest of the committee of their affiliation with a given organization. But they'd be fully allowed to participate in the discussion and on the merits of the funding request and to give an opinion on whether or not to fund that request. And I feel that if the, if we include any written conflict of interest along with the recommendation, as those recommendations go to the county council and to the Board of Commissioners, that other decisions can be made at that point then, as long as we know what that conflict of interest is and what it means. So I will also point out to the public that the, this opioid settlement allocation recommendation board meets in public. It's a public body. We are recording our sessions so that people can go back and review what those are, and we should, not only the county council and county commissioners, but the general public would know if there's any conflict of interest that goes with this. And so I would like to change the wording in that section. But that's me as one of the people voting on the, what this will say. Thank you. That was very long.
So I think I can accomplish that by changing the language in subsection B, which is displayed on the screen currently, and I could take out the bit of language that is highlighted, and it would then become, "A board member who declares a conflict of interest with a particular grant will do so in writing, but will be allowed to engage in discussion and approval of that particular grant application."
Thank you. That would be something that I would be very comfortable with. I have a lot of respect for the people in recovery who are public about their recovery, and I truly, truly value the input that they are offering here. We currently have two members of that five-member board who are in recovery, and I don't want them, I don't want their experience that I value so highly to be ignored in our decision-making. So with that...
So I amended it, and it's easier for me to see it than sometimes hear it. So the language displayed on the screen, I think, encompasses the recommendations that were expressed.
But then we don't need the sentence of three or more board members have to recuse themselves. Am I correct? And I would like to point out, too, I am not a lawyer. This is my reading of the law. So if there's any disagreement from either you, Ms. Turner King, or Mr. Cockrell, please, please advise me.
I don't think there's any validity of, hey, somebody who makes... As long as it's a known, so I would almost even add to the end of this, be a member who declares a conflict with a particular grant will be such in writing, but is willing to engage in discussion, approval, denial of that particular grant. However, when such action is taken, the conflict will be forwarded along with the recommendation, something like that. In a way, we need to acknowledge that there is a conflict, and we need the people who are reviewing the recommendation to know what the conflict is. And I think the recommendation makes sense.
Is this something we'll be able to vote on today?
If you amend the motion, what's on the screen as...
And I added now a second sentence to encompass what Mr. Cockrell was just saying. So however, when such action is taken, the conflict of interest will be forwarded and noted for the Board of Commissioners along with the recommendation.
I'd like to move to amend this statement as indicated on the screen with the work that Ms. Turner King is doing.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment? We have, oops, we have Councilmember Iverson here with us, who is also a member of this board.
That's right, Peter Iverson, Monroe County Council, and also Secretary of this body. President Andre Butler could not be here today, but I wanted to urge you to not adopt this amendment, because we did have a robust conversation about this in our meeting last Friday, where the majority of the opioid settlement board wanted to stick with what has been tradition in the county, particularly with the other bodies, where individuals with a fiduciary conflict of interest recuse themselves from discussions, so as not to unduly influence the vote. And I think that, of course, conversation was recorded. I wanted to also address a topic that was brought up by Commissioner Jones. The adoption of this would be, today would be very greatly appreciated, as we have two cycles of requests that we would like to fund this Friday when the board meets again. And of course, a conflict of interest standard like this would be important for us to do so.
Thank you. I'll point out that the, what was presented today by Ms. Turner King was the recommendation of that board, that the final determination is with the Board of Commissioners, and I mean no disrespect in saying that at all.
That is, that is none taken, and I fully respect the authority of the Board of Commissioners to make these changes.
Well, and I will point out too, that it was members of our board who talked about conflicts of interest, that they weren't ignoring the possibility of this. And so, part of what I'm trying to do with this is to both include people with lived experience, but also have a written record of any kind of potential conflict of interest, so that that goes with, goes into the decision-making of that review board, and their recommendations that they forward, and then the decision-making by the county council and the county commissioners on how to spend those opioid dollars. Thank you.
I'd like to explore the word fiduciary, in that it seems that, and I very much agree with you about the importance of the opinions of people with lived experience, and some of those opinions would have been, may well have been influenced by agencies that are asking for this money. But someone with lived experience wouldn't necessarily have fiduciary involvement with these agencies, would they? Or, I mean, I...
They could be contractors, they could be, in the current instance, there perhaps is only one individual for the stuff we're looking at, but if the health department, for example, applied, then that would give an additional monies to the health department. I don't think that would mean that the health person would gain in a fiduciary manner, but certainly the department would.
I would say our rule, the portion of this ordinance that is stricken under this request included language that says this included but is not limited to members who are employed by the applicant organization, right? So, under the old rules, a health department employee, if any county department, it could be argued if any county department applied for something, would be an employee of the applicant organization of Monroe County, right? I mean, I...
That they would be.
I think that, I think the conflict with the former language is that it seems to be, when we look at who's on the board and things like that, it just seems to be too broad. And I think everybody agrees with that broadness. I think if you look at your classic conflict of interest from a county perspective, I think you guys would find that too narrow. I mean, I would point to a decision that we had to make some years ago, where a spouse could vote on the budget for a different spouse, and it was not a conflict of interest, which I think goes, which is probably not, too loose for what most people consider to be conflict of interest, but you know, we researched that at the time. So, I hear going with, I would say if we went with kind of the state standard for conflict of interest, you would hardly ever have a, an issue unless it's a direct contractor and a direct employee getting paid. And I think, my feeling is that we wanted it, we expected it to be a little bit broader than that. So, I think you're kind of stuck in that middle area, where, you know, if you go with state code and things, you're going to have situations where you're going to say, "Well, we really consider that to be, for this purpose, a conflict of interest." And then I hear, and then, you know, but do we really want the former language, which would have basically any employee of the county having to recuse itself for any county request? Which I think you guys would all agree is too broad.
You know, I will add that this, the discussion that was had by the opioid settlement board to try to further define what the previous language was defining as a fiduciary interest is why they added, in essence, subsection A with the Roman numerals I through, or one through six. That language is similar, but not identical to what the cares board uses to define a conflict of interest. And so, that language was trying to further define what maybe C and D of the former resolution was the intent or getting at.
Well, I certainly agree that it's important, I guess that I think if a written comment defining the conflict and making it clear as to, you know, is it fiduciary, is it just connection, you know, where does the conflict lie? In the case of a recommendation, I think that gives enough information so that we can determine for ourselves whether or not we think the conflict is relevant.
While this doesn't speak to the language here, you know, I talked about those five principles that Johns Hopkins School of Public Health has put out. Principle number one is spend money to save lives. And it's invest in programs and supplement what is already being done. And I think that individuals in recovery have a sense of how we can, can guide us in how we spend money to save lives, and also they know what programs locally are successful with trying to do that. And so, it was, it was after participating in this program yesterday that I just did this deep dive, because I wanted so badly to include the folks in recovery in this decision-making. And this, what was encouraging to me too, is that in Monroe County, we are doing many of these principles. In fact, we already, through JDEI and our Youth Services Bureau, are already doing what was, they call it principle number three, invest in youth prevention. And so, I just feel really, really good that the kinds of stuff that we are looking to do with this opioid settlement money, we are ahead of so many other places in the country with what we're doing, and the fact that we created this board, that we listened to people in the creation of the board, and so I feel very, very good about this. Ms. Purdy, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, I actually...
I'm very passionate about this.
I know you are, but I just wanted to ask a question. So, let's pretend that I am a provider for people with substance abuse issues, and I have requested funding, but there is another provider on the board who is also requesting funding. How is that addressed? And how do I not walk away feeling like, or how do either of us not walk away feeling like we were, like that I didn't get it because this other person was on the board voting? And how does the other person on the board who also might need it feel like, "I can't, I'm not going to get it because this person got it?" So, that's my question, is how do you deal with those conflicts? Because those are going to, those exist.
Remember that this board is making recommendations to the county commissioners and to the county council, they're not the ultimate authority handing out that money, for one thing. And then another thing that we are trying to put into place is to come up with a numerical rating of each of the proposals, so that we can go back and look at those, we're looking at creating averages from the people, but also I think if we have this written conflict of interest statement that goes with it, that that will go to the, both the council and the commissioners as part of their ultimate decision-making on the money.
Okay, so then maybe, what I'm thinking is, instead of having all of this language that we have, because I like to keep things a little more simply, and that is, anyone who's on the board, who is a employee of, or a member of, or the owner of, who may be receiving, who may be receiving funds, or has applied for funds, that they just flat-out say, they have that disclaimer on there, "My office would benefit from X, Y, and Z. That needs to go to the commissioners so that they understand that that would be happening on that side." The substance abuse provider would say, you know, "I'm applying, and I'd like for the money to come to my office, more so than the other person." Because I'll tell you, they're going to make, each one of those entities is going to make wonderful proposals. And I don't know how you're going to pick one over the other, I really don't. And I don't know how the commissioners would be put in that position. I mean, to me, it's just, it just makes it kind of dirty.
And I hear, my response to that would be, somebody's got to make the substitution, right? And that's, that's part of the government. The concern to me in using your example is if you took B as it applied, and I think this is where maybe some of the concern is, that if I applied and I'm on the board, then I am, have to recuse myself from the discussion, right? How do I present, how do I communicate with the board about my proposal if I am having to recuse myself from the discussion? I think that is a concern I would have with part B.
Is everybody else getting to present to the board? Because I don't think they are, I think they're just submitting...
I don't know how that works, but that...
But it would be the same if the person is not, if nobody else is submitting, right?
As of right now, the applications are written, and the board is considering written applications, but the meetings are also public, and I don't think there's anything that prevents a grantor from making public comment in support of their application.
So, at this point, we have before us an amendment to the proposed language, if I'm still on track.
And for clarity, the only language I amended was in that subsection B, removing the language regarding recusal from the discussion. And so, I left all of the proposed language in subsection A, which defines what affiliations could be considered a conflict of interest. I didn't know if you wanted to amend that language or leave as is.
I'm happy with it as is, but I think also this speaks to who, both the, well, who the Board of Health, the county council, and the county commissioners appoint to this board. And what I, for us, we were very purposeful in not appointing someone who's affiliated, or who's not a member of some of the harm reduction and treatment and recovery housing and prevention programs that exist in our community. And so, I think also it speaks to the kinds of deliberation we need to have in terms of how we appoint folks to this particular advisory board. Yeah. I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Iverson, thank you very much.
The only thing I could add that doesn't muddy this conversation is that the council had the same approach. We appointed someone who we felt did not have direct connection with a lot of these agencies, but did have lived experience as someone that was in active recovery. So, thank you for making that comment, Commissioner Githens.
Okay, so, at this point, are we ready to vote on the amendment? Commissioner Jones?
If the amendment doesn't pass, then we vote on the original. And if that were voted down, then what?
Then you are, then the ordinance, or the ordinance isn't changed, and so then you have the stricken language...
Okay.
...which is more restrictive than any of these changes, right? So, the current language that's in our ordinance would be more restrictive than saying yes to either version of this.
Okay. Yes, I am ready to vote.
Okay. Call for a vote for, on the amendment to, I've got to go back and find my...
I don't think we did public comment, did we?
That, Mr., I thought Councilmember Iverson was part of the public. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the amendment? This is an amendment to Resolution 2024-39, amending Resolution 2024-21. I also point out that if there is a tie in this situation on the voting, and one member is not present, we are to reconsider this when the third, when all three Board of Commissioners are present, according to state code. And I've seen...
I thought it just failed.
Well, it depends on if, I said if it's one, one.
Oh.
It's mine.
Okay, I see.
Yes.
Hello, yes, Joe Davis. I think that there's a, there's a solution to mitigate the, some of the conflict of interest dilemmas that one could find themselves in as a, as the board is conducting their work. And one way to mitigate that would be to increase the size of the board membership, the review committee membership, to seven members instead of five. When one looks at section two, membership and team, under section A, it describes five members should be appointed as follows. One member with lived experience, appointed by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, one representative from the health department, chosen by the commissioners, one representative by the...
This is incorrect, what's written there is incorrect.
It's not, where is the correction?
There's, there's not a representative recommended by the Board of Judges, there are two representatives chosen by the county council.
And I apologize for interrupting Mr. Davis's comment. This is, and I just noticed this, we amended it after it was originally passed, so this is the original, the membership is not the current membership as reflected, and I will stop screen sharing and get the correct membership as reflected.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Davis, but I wanted things to be correct here.
Well, again, generally, I wish to say that increasing the membership to seven members would mitigate somewhat the conflict of interest issue, in that if there is a conflict of interest and members have to recuse themselves from a decision to award, then there will be additional members available. And currently, it appears as if the existing five members are three from the commissioners, two from the council. If we do take a recommendation from the Board of Judges, and the auditor is also a member, then we could increase, well, that would be seven right there, three commissioner appointments, three council appointments, one Board of Judges appointment, and the auditor. And then with this, a person with lived experience, or a person with direct impact to the issues... And then with this, a person with lived experience or a person with direct impact to the issues could be appointed by any one of these groups, the commissioners, the council, the Board of Judges. And we could have multiple members with lived, direct impact experience. There's no need for just one. We can have more than one, two, three. Definitely those on the ground need to be assisting with determining where these awards of the opioid settlement money should be best used in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, we're ready to take a vote on the amendment to, well, for written statements on conflict of interest for people that are on the opioid settlement allocation review board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the amendment passes two to zero. And now we need to talk about the actual, the amendment to the amendment has passed, so, yes.
And I will correct resolution, I think it's 39 to, so that it reflects the membership component that's displayed on the board. I'll just take that language and paste it right here accordingly.
Right, right, right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there any other further discussion of the amendment that was, that's in our package? Any other public discussion? Or Commissioner Jones? If not, I'll call for a vote on Resolution 2024-35, amending Resolution 2024-21 on the opioid settlement application, review application board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. And I thank everyone for their thoughtfulness and their input on this. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to appointments. I believe we have one today.
Yes, I'd like to move that we appoint Sharon Baker to an unfinished term on the Human Rights Commission. It's a four-year term that ends February 1st, 2025.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Ms. Baker, her paper seems very qualified, and I want to thank her for applying to, for this. Do we take public comment on appointments? I didn't think so. Okay.
No, we do not take public comment on appointments.
Okay. So with that, I'll call for a vote on the appointment of Sharon Baker to the joint Monroe County Bloomington Human Rights Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Do we have any other appointments that you're aware of? I'm not either. With that, we'll move on to announcements. There's still free COVID testing available through the Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic located at 333 East Miller Drive. The Hoosier Hills Food Bank is accepting non-perishable food items. I think there's still, we've still got something downstairs, but I also wanted to announce that Hoosier Hills Food Bank will have a small booth at Canopy of Lights, which this year is November the 29th, at, here around the courthouse. Last year, if you were facing the stage, their booth was at the far-left end, and I think it was Commissioner Thomas that said, "Please bring a can of peas to the Canopy of Lights." So we're encouraging people, you know, the Canopy of Lights occurs the day after Thanksgiving, and so we've all hopefully been together to enjoy families and a meal. So I hope that people will share some of that with others in our community who are still in need of food. You can either bring non-perishables, hopefully no glass items, to the Canopy of Lights, or you can make a donation in different ways. You can also donate to Hoosier Hills at hhfoodbank.org online. And we also heard from Pantry 279 today about their need. And again, last year, they helped almost 2,700 families. Hopefully, it was close to 20,000 people who were fed on Thanksgiving Day. I got to meet some of those individuals. And as Cindy Chavez said, Thanksgiving isn't just about the meal. It's about family, it's about memories. And so we're, we're doing that when we, when we support these organizations. If you want to make a donation to Pantry 279, or sign up for one of the meals, go to pantry279.org online. CASA, Monroe County CASA training begins January 21st and will run through February 20th. Training will be Tuesday and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30, and applications are due by January 10th. For more information, go to monroecountycasa.org or call 812-333-2272. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissions, and we have a big turnover at the end of the year, January 1st. And so we're encouraging people to please apply, please give your time. We continue to hold virtual office hours via Teams six times a month. You can get online at the calendar, find out when we are available. These are not recorded, and you can talk one-on-one with a county commissioner about your concerns. We're still holding blood drives at Ivy Tech in Shreve Hall. This is being done in conjunction with Ivy Tech and with the American Red Cross. The next time to donate is Wednesday, December the 11th, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., or Friday, December the 13th, from 10:00 to 3:00. To make an appointment, go to redcross.org. And we still, do we have any things going on with our septic?
I don't manage that one.
I can give you a real quick update. We met with the Health Department yesterday. As of yesterday, they had over 70 applications in. Again, I'm not sure that we, with our current budget, can fund all of those, but we will see at the end of the day. We are still getting kind of the, we just got a round of septic, of soil testing done, and so we're looking at that. While we're in this meeting, I had a few emails from that department. I think one of them is another application, or another set of quotes that we reviewed to go out. I think we expect to have between four and six fully complete this year with, with a list of probably 70 that we still could fund with the goal of getting all that, the quotes and the, all the work that has to be done before you actually install it done, so that they can be all installed next septic installation season, which would be when it's dry out. So I think we've got enough, although I don't want to discourage anybody from applying because I think that's good information for us to have, and we can look at how we're going to handle that. But we have over 70 applications in, which we've been running about 20,000 a septic system. So that's 1.4 million, and if my math is correct, that's, you know, that's, assuming they're all qualified, we're still going through some of that, but I know we have over 40 that have been qualified through the auditor's office, and I have not heard from the Health Department anybody who hasn't qualified through them. But we just had a quick meeting yesterday, and so we didn't get all that information. It's weird.
This is septic, county septic repair program that we're sponsoring with, using some of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. Is that correct? And people apply online?
Correct.
Okay.
They apply to the Health Department.
Right.
Then it's online, it's on the website.
And the two criteria are, does your property have a home security credit, and is the assessed value of your property under $300,000?
Well, there's actually more failing septic or an leju.
And then there's some questions about what's your current status of your septic, but the auditor's review is for those two items, and then the, it has to be failing or over, I believe it's 35 years old.
This is a public health issue, and so I'm glad that so many people are applying. The last thing is that residents can sign up for Monroe County Alert Notification Systems for all weather and health-related emergencies. To do that, go to www.co-monroe.in.us and look for the megaphone. Is that right? With that, do you have anything else to add to our announcements? Okay, well, I will adjourn this meeting, and we will be back on November the 20th here in the Net U Hill Room. We do not have a work session, so we'll see you all next week. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, TSD cats.